All right. Calling to order the Monday, December 7th, 2020, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here, coming at you live and then 3D from Berkeley, Michigan.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here, coming from Berkeley, Michigan also.
Mayor Protendine.
You're muted.
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Councilmember Henan.
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Councilmember Price.
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
And Mayor Turbrack.
I am here and also in Berkeley, Michigan. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any changes or additions? Mayor Protendine?
Actually.
Did you jump in ahead?
I am, I am, forget it, I'll wait.
Okay, all right. Seeing no additional questions, or I should say additions. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Reverend Tal Sullivan.
Let's pray. Almighty God, I thank you for the privilege you've given us to live in a nation which has pledged to live under your open blessing for the mayor, the council, the city staff, and of my city. God, I do pray for each of them to experience the indescribable joy of knowing you and your wisdom. Please bless them in their service to the city of Berkeley as well as in their personal lives. I also pray for those in our city who are struggling right now. Please use us to be a blessing and encouragement to them as we continue to want our city to be a place where your blessings rest. I pray this all in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. All right, we are now at our first public comments section of the evening. This is for items that are included on tonight's agenda. Again, there will be a separate public comment section at the end for items that were not included on tonight's agenda. Please remember that council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berklee mich dot net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment, please raise your hand if you are here or dial in at 1312-626-6799 and you will be recognized by either your name or your number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence and remember you will be limited to three minutes and after that we will be moving on.
I see no one at this time, sir.
We'll give another couple of seconds. And then number 1312-626-6799. Does not appear that we have anybody else in. Ms. Mitchell, I know I asked you this before the meeting was live, but again, you have not had any communications to be read into the public comments, is that correct?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, seeing nobody else, we will close the first public comments portion of our evening and we will move on to tonight's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th regular city council meeting on Monday, November 16th, 2020. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1357. Three, ordinance number O1720, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, amending section 138-222 of Division 1 of Article 4 of Chapter 138 zoning of the city of Berkeley Code of Ordinance to permit permeal pavement for parking areas.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any corrections or additions? Mayor Protendine, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, in my communications, the Berkeley Dance Club should read the Berkeley Dads Club and Moms Club should be the Berkeley Moms Club. Those, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other corrections or additions from members of council? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Our consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving a report from Plant and Moran regarding the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020.
All right, I see that we have our friends from Plant, Lisa and Keith with us. Before we hand it over to them, Mr. Baumgarten or Mr. Pollak, anything in terms of preamble?
Just want to remind the millions viewing at home that annually, the city goes through a very vigorous financial audit in which Plant Moran, the city's auditors actually come in. This year they came in virtually, but they actually go through several files, they work with finance department and produce the document you see in your packet there, which is the city's annual comprehensive financial report. They'll go through some of the details of that this evening, but this document will be available on the city's website as with all past CAFERS, is what we call them for short. So any resident who is interested can go through and see exactly how the city's finances are holding up. So it's a great tool for anybody who is interested in seeing the financial health of the city of Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. Mr. Pollak, anything to add before I turn it over to Keith and Lisa?
I just want to thank everybody involved this year virtually. It was a, it was a little more challenging, but happy with everything we were able to get accomplished. All the directors pitched in as usual, Lori and Sue. Very helpful as always, and then like I say, each of the directors chip in and do their part. So I just want to thank everybody, it went very well in my estimation.
All right, well, thank you for that. Certainly it was a different process and we'll hear much more about that right now. Lisa, Keith, whoever wants to begin, Lisa, I think you usually kick it off and then hand it over to Keith for a minute. Okay, great.
Yep, some things stay the same as much as things are different right now. So thank you very much, Mayor and members of the city council, so good to see you virtually. And I would just echo starting what Matt and Mark both said. Certainly this was a very different year in a lot of ways and so we're very thankful that Mark and Lori and Sue were able to be patient with us as we worked through the process. I mean, clearly we feel like after nine months of this, we've gotten very efficient at doing remote audits, but we know for clients, it's always the first time through. So the effort was certainly there, we thought that it did go very smoothly. And even in a normal year, pulling together that comprehensive annual financial report is no small feat. So doing so in a virtual environment and getting the audit issued at essentially the same timeframe that we typically would really is a testament to how hard the finance department worked and all the other departments worked together to make that happen. So we're very appreciative of that and so glad to be working with the city and happy for the cooperation that we had this year. So related to the audit opinion, which certainly is the most important part that we provide into that gigantic document, which we do certainly encourage everyone to take a read through, especially the first section, the management's discussion and analysis that is entirely put together by management. But if city council or residents are looking for just a narrative overview on how the year ended June 30, 2020 went, that's a great place to start, just to understand some of the significant impacts and things that, events that had an impact on the financial results for this year. In just a minute, Keith will go through some slide presentations to give highlights of the financial condition of the city. But first off, again, just getting back to the results of our few weeks of auditing procedures where we still did go through the same kinds of tests that we would in a typical year, making sure to really dig into balances, particularly where there are greater risks of material misstatements or significant activities. And the result of all of that is once again, what we refer to as an unmodified opinion, which basically means that everything within that comprehensive annual financial report was materially correct and in accordance with all of the applicable accounting standards that would be in play for the city of Berkeley. So that's the highest form of assurance you can get and what you would hope to see every year from your audit firm. In the current year, there really weren't any significant changes in terms of accounting standards. So GAZB did do us a little bit of a break this year in deferring the implementation dates for a few new standards that were supposed to be put into effect for 2020. That was just a one-year deferral though, so next year in 2021, you will see some new accounting standards that are implemented and we describe those to our letter of comments that I'll cover after Keith is done with the graphs. But really overall, as I said, the financial state, or Keith will get into some more particulars on the financial condition of the city. Overall, we did see a slight decrease to fund balance in the general funds, but that was planned and less than was budgeted actually. So it just goes to again demonstrate the careful planning that's gone in to the city's financial condition. But again, given where we're sitting here in December of 2020, we know that there's some challenges that are to come in terms of state shared revenue, that's a bit of a question mark, what the impact's going to be. And then continuing to look at the challenges of funding of legacy costs in terms of pension and retiree healthcare benefits. So those are, those are kind of the most significant factors that we encourage the city to continue to look at. We did see some investments in infrastructure that happened this year. And then clearly the demolition of the ice arena had an impact on the city's budget this year. That was really more of a one-time, one-time event. So again, I'll get into discussing the letter of comments and observations at the end. But Keith, if you'd like to walk us through the graphs to give a high-level overview of financial condition, that would be great.
Thanks.
And certainly feel free to ask questions along, sorry.
It's nice to be with everyone this evening. As Lisa said, we've got just a handful of graphs to give you the financial highlights for the last year as opposed to going through the 100-plus page CAFER document. So I'll start with just a few summary slides on the general fund. We start with a three-year history of revenue in the general fund. It has been steadily increasing each of the last few years. The total for 2020 was about $12 million, which is $420,000 more than 2019. As is typically the case, property tax revenue is the largest revenue source, making up about two-thirds of total general fund revenue. Property tax revenue was up about 6% compared to 2019 and that was a combination of an increase in taxable value as well as a slight increase in the public safety retirement millage, which is included in the general fund. The second largest revenue source, state shared revenue decreased just 2% as a result of decreased sales tax revenues at the statewide level and then that amount that's dispersed to local units of government. So you know, despite three and a half months of the pandemic falling within the fiscal year, the financial impact on revenue, as you can see, was fairly minimal. The next slide shows a three-year trend of expenditures within the general fund. As revenue has been increasing, so have expenditures, as was planned. Total expenditures for 2020 were $12.2 million, which is up a little bit more than a million compared to 2019. That's a fairly large increase, but it was planned and then many of the increased items were of a one-term nature. You can see the category that increased the most was actually on the bottom one, that includes capital outlay and transfers to other funds. Capital outlay was about $1.4 million in 2020, which is quite a bit more than 2019. And it really wasn't one item, it was a combination of several purchases of vehicles, equipment and some land over the last year. Additionally, there were about $380,000 of transfers to other funds, most of it going to the recreation revolving fund. Public safety remained the largest category of expenditures and was fairly consistent from 2019 to 2020. And general government increased about half a million dollars, mostly due to a planned additional contribution to the pension plan. So despite the nearly $1 million increase in expenditures, it was entirely within the plan and the budget of the city. So sort of combining those results, the revenues and expenditures, because expenditures were slightly greater than revenue, there was a use of fund balance of just under $200,000 for the last year. But still, total fund balance was about $6.5 million. And as you can see, prior to 2020, that had been steadily increasing for the last several years. And although 2014 dropped off the graph this year, if that were included, you'd have actually seen that fund balance essentially doubled from 2014 to 2019. So the city has done a great job of keeping an eye on their budget, remaining within its means and the limits that it faces in terms of property tax growth and the reliance on the state for revenue sharing, which is basically beyond its control. So the general fund finds itself in a good position, but I think this year, more than any others in recent years, we can see the importance of maintaining these reserves. There's certainly quite a bit of uncertainty that remains with how the pandemic's going to influence Berkeley and other local units of government going forward. Some of the largest revenue sources, I talked about state shared revenue in the general fund, but also the gas and weight tax money that comes into the road funds are totally dependent on the resources that the state collects. And so if those were to go down, the money that the city receives would go down. Additionally, it's still very uncertain how long the economic impact will last and to what degree the economy as a whole will be impacted, which will immediately impact sales tax revenue, but over the long term could impact home sales, which leads to taxable value and then eventually it leads to increases in the city's largest revenue source, property taxes. So it's important to keep an eye on those. So those are some of the reasons we haven't talked about in a while, these significant uncertainties that make it important to remain fund balanced. But on top of that, there's also the need just to have some reserves on hand for cash flows and emergencies and also to look ahead to future capital needs and additional funding that the pension and retiree healthcare plans will require. With that, switch gears for one slide to the water and sewer fund. Just as the general fund remains in strong financial position, so too does the water and sewer fund. You can see that total revenue exceeded total expenses for the last year. The fund had positive operating income and added to its total net position by about $1 million. You can see though, in that last bar, the net position is broken out into two categories. Most of it is already invested in capital assets, so that's not available for future operations. But there is still $1.2 million unrestricted and can be spent on operations. And so that remains a fairly strong number compared to the actual expenditures and operating expenses of the fund. But still too, just like in the general fund, there is the need to remain cautious of the spending of this net position if there were to be any in the future and to make sure that adequate remain, an adequate amount remains on hand for future needs. So while those first four slides cover the short-term results in the general and the water and sewer funds, there do remain some long-term challenges for the city of Berkeley, specifically the pension and retiree healthcare or OPAP funding. So on this graph, we summarized all three plans, the two pension plans and the one retiree healthcare plan. The total bar represents the total liability, the actuaries' measurement of the future costs of providing these benefits. And then the greenish line at the bottom measures how much of the total liability is already funded by assets within the trust. So going from left to right, the general employees' pension plan is 53% funded, the public safety pension trust is 73% funded, and retiree healthcare is 31% funded. And so if you add up the orange portion or the unfunded liabilities for each of the three plans, that totals $30 million, which obviously is very significant compared to the annual budget. But the good news is these are long-term liabilities. They're not expected to be paid off in the near future. There won't be immediate and dramatic impacts on the budget in a given year. It's just important that the city continues to keep an eye on these, make the required contributions and make any additional contributions when they can, and just continue to chip away at this liability. So Lisa and I have been giving a similar message to many of our clients over the last few months. These numbers don't and haven't changed dramatically from year to year, which is both a good thing and a bad thing. Communities still have some catching up to do. Most of them are, you know, still a fair amount below 100% funding, which is where they'd like to be. But they're also doing what they can to make the contributions, keep an eye on the trust, invest them wisely, maintain what's there and continue to build piece by piece for the future. So with that, before I turn it back over to Lisa, I'll pause briefly, see if there are any questions on things we covered in terms of financial results or anything that we didn't cover that you were hoping we'd talk about.
Any questions for Keith while we still have him in the slides? If we want to reference any of those things that he just mentioned? I know Keith, I think, why, I appreciate you giving us the update as you typically do. As you mentioned many times, there are just so many question marks regarding the budget and as you mentioned, a large chunk of that is the state shared revenue and money that we know is going to be reduced. It's just a matter of how significantly it's going to be reduced and what immediate changes that may force for, you know, in our hands. And I know you guys don't have any of those answers right now, so I'm not going to ask you what that is going to be. But I think it is important, you know, you mentioned a couple of times, we do have a fair fund balance that we've been focused on trying to make sure that was there in case anything like this did happen. And it's important as we plan and certainly move into next year's budget process, to be very cautious until we know what things are going to look like.
As you said, the important thing is to keep an eye on it through the budget, running some different scenarios, especially these days as there's increased uncertainty and to the degree you can start to anticipate things and react sooner rather than later, it helps to maintain that fund balance as best as possible.
Excellent, thank you, Keith.
Yeah, I always, I always liked that fund balance slide because I think it demonstrates very visually, you know, the importance of fund balance and we all know the effort it takes to build it up, but you can see what the starting point was just six years ago. So it can change very quickly and so that's why it's important to have that strong starting point and as you said, Mayor be cautious throughout the next year and beyond.
Certainly. Any other questions before we turn it back over to Lisa? I guess we should go ahead and if other questions do come up, certainly make sure that we have time to address them.
Absolutely. So the other piece of information that you should have received from us is our letter of comments and recommendations. So there, in some years, I will point this out first. So in some years, there would be three sections to this letter that we would be required to report to you. The first one would often be a letter on internal control observations where we describe any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the city's internal control, either as a result of errors we encounter during the course of the audit or just our planning review of internal control, if anything comes to our attention, where we see deficiencies that are significant enough, that rise to a significant level, we'd be required to report them in writing and you will see that section is not present in this year's letter. So again, especially in a year where we think about the significant changes that needed to be made to, in the work environment and working remotely and changing in how things were done, we didn't have any internal control observations that were of that significance that needed to be reported. So we certainly like to point that out because we know some years we've had comments there and it shows that those have been addressed and improvements have been made. And so again, congratulations on that, but we also, another area for continued vigilance, especially as things continue to change, making sure as people change positions or technology changes, that safeguards continue to be in place. So glad to give that report. Looking at the sections that are included, so section one this year entitled Required Communications with Those Charged with Governance. So this would be our letter where we discuss more the qualitative aspects of how the audit went and any significant changes or other matters to bring to your attention beyond just our opinion and the financial results. It starts with just a reiteration of our responsibility in an audit, which is to give an opinion on the information that is gathered and given to us by management. Beneath that, we do report the plan, scope and timing of the audit, which was, as I mentioned, in accordance with what we had previously communicated and there were no significant changes in scope or surprises that came up through the course of the audit. Beneath that, in terms of significant audit findings, here's where we would report if there were any new accounting pronouncements that were implemented, any unusual transactions, or we do talk about significant accounting estimates here. And really for the city of Berkeley, the most significant accounting estimates really are related to those legacy cost liabilities, retiree healthcare and pension, since those do require the services of an actuary. There's a lot of assumptions that go into those actuarial calculations and we certainly look at them for reasonableness and consistency with standards, but clearly that is something that is really pulled together by a third party and we evaluate the results of their, of their calculations. From there, really the letter is pretty, pretty clean in terms of, we have discussions if there were any difficulties encountered in the audit, any disagreements with management or any uncorrected misstatements and we really don't have any of those things to report. So again, a very smooth audit process, all things considered. So really that's, that's the overview of the audit process itself. And then section two of this letter, we touch on probably a dozen different topics here, so I won't go into each and every one of them. Did want to point out, as we were talking about some of the uncertainties and, you know, a lot of things going on legislatively and grants that are out there for assistance in dealing with impact of the pandemic. We do point out in the letter our COVID-19 Resource Center, where we try to have as frequent updates as we can on, you know, what we're hearing on the legislative side of things or on revenue sharing changes. So we do encourage you to check that out and there's an opportunity to sign up to get automatic alerts delivered to your email box to make sure that we're providing you with the most up-to-date information we can as things progress. Outside of that, I don't think there's anything here that is, that is all that different from things that we've talked about already, some process updates on the uniform chart of accounts and the CAFER application process. And again, just a reminder on the technology front, clearly we're all getting very used to this remote environment and functioning, we're doing our jobs a lot differently than we used to before, but that also presents opportunities in terms of information, technology, security and cybersecurity. So we encourage you, again, as we encourage all of our clients, just to be very vigilant. We do see the instance of attempted cyber attacks increasing in this environment. So it certainly is a time for continued vigilance and we're happy to always be a source for resources if there's any concerns that anyone has. And then the last section of this is just a reminder of those upcoming financial statement changes that are expected over the next couple of years, assuming that GAZB doesn't give us another break in implementing all of that. So will be some new, new reporting requirements that we'll be reporting back to you on next year this time. So with that, I'll open it up again to any questions.
All right, well, thank you, Lisa and Keith. Questions for our auditors? I think they did a pretty comprehensive job of covering the main areas of importance, the things that we like to make sure. the things that we like to make sure are brought up and may like to make sure our residents, um, see, but any, any, uh, particular questions from members of council? Well, Lisa and Keith, it looks like you guys have done a wonderful job. Um, there we go, council member Baker, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, mostly, yeah, mostly a comment, but you know, hey, this is important stuff. Um, as you guys know, I do really appreciate, um, these audits every year, not only for the independent perspective on how we're, uh, taking care of the city's, um, trusted resources and assets here, uh, but also the thoughtfulness with which you provide this material to us. And I'm curious more about the, the region around us, to the extent that you could offer any commentary on how our friends and neighbors are doing. This is, uh, this is one of those times certainly where every city is doing what they can to try to make ends meet and, and, uh, and position for an unknown future. Uh, and yet, uh, we're not the only ones trying to cope with this, right? And, uh, the extent to which, um, our neighbors are able to, uh, survive and thrive, um, so therefore are we. So, uh, to whatever extent you're able to offer just a little bit of a zoom out perspective on southeastern Michigan or this corner of Oakland County or whatever, I think it'd be interesting to kind of get a feel for, um, not only where we're at, cause I think you guys have done a terrific job in, 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 um, in-depth analysis and in this summary perspective here tonight. Uh, but, um, but how are we doing in the bigger sense? Is there any commentary that you, that you, uh, care to offer, uh, related to that bigger picture, the trends that you see, things that are going on around us?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I, I think, like you said, um, southeast Michigan, uh, you know, typically the, the impact may be different than what is felt by the, the rest of the state, certainly, um, when there's an economic downturn. Um, i- in this case, I'd say at the moment, everyone is still in a very similar position as the city of Berkeley, um, typically that we deal with where, you know, things were, I'll say, kind of feeling like we were reaching a different, uh, state of normal where people were starting to have smaller resources to put aside for legacy costs, were re, um, we're, we're, uh, spending more money, investing in infrastructure and taking care of some of that deferred maintenance. Um, and so now is a point where maybe things will, we'll, we'll just reevaluate a little bit, I guess I would say, and, and definitely a time of caution, certainly not anything that I've seen, um, from, you know, to one extreme or the other, um, from the same issues that you're dealing with in the city of Berkeley. I, I think it's, again, it's, it hasn't been, um, maybe as, there hasn't been a immediate, uh, downturn in revenues that we see. It's more this kind of holding our breath a little bit to see what the next six months bring, and, and I think all communities are, are in a very similar boat.
Right, thank you, and, and, and I appreciate that. I know our, our DDA in particular, uh, benefits, uh, quite a bit from the revenue that comes in through its, the TIF and, and CAFR and all that good stuff. And I think, um, you know, as our businesses around us, uh, continue to struggle, it's like whatever we can do to help them. And it's, uh, I'm just glad to hear that, you know, glad, but I'm at least, um, thank you for sharing that, that, um, that we're all kind of in the same situation here and the more that we can do to help bolster one another, uh, we can only help ourselves that much more as well. So, so thanks and, um, uh, again, I, I, I'm a big fan, uh, of this, um, kind of work, uh, and, uh, and you guys happen to, to do a, a fine job with this, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Lisa, I do, uh, certainly appreciate you calling out the internal controls, uh, that is obviously something that we have talked about, as you mentioned, over, uh, a few years in the past and we've worked really diligently to, to improve those and, and seeing that that was not something that certainly was on the list right now. Um, that, that, that's important because these are things that we strive to always do better. Look, handling the, the budget of the city, the resources of the residents is the most important thing that we do. So what you and Keith are presenting to us today is incredibly important and making sure that we're moving in the right direction and doing the right things for the residents of Berkeley is about most important. So I certainly appreciate you guys, again, taking the time to be with us today to present this and, and all the work that went in for the, um, virtual audit, Mark. Again, as you mentioned, Sue and Lori and yourself doing a phenomenal job putting together this CAFR. Um, we've, we've kind of, unfortunately for you guys, put yourself up in this high echelon that, uh, now you have no choice but to continue to, to do that because you set those expectations so highly for, for all of us. Um, but make no mistake, we do not overlook, uh, the work and the time that your staff, uh, and you do in putting together this, uh, CAFR for us and working with our auditors throughout the year. So thank you, uh, Mr. Pollack and your team. Seeing no additional questions or comments, again, thank you Lisa and Keith for being with us and we will now move on, uh, in our agenda to item number two, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion number M sixty-six twenty, manner of authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for senior home chore snow removal service to A1 Lawn and Snow Services LLC, five four zero five Williamson Street, Dearborn, Michigan, four eight one two six. Thirty-five hundred dollars will be paid from account two seven five dash nine four zero dash eight one eight dash zero four three, and remaining expenses will be paid from six one four dash one zero five dash eight one eight dash zero zero zero.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-six twenty?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgartner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you're joined by, uh, Teresa McCarleton, our Parks Direct Director. Her department, uh, oversees this program, so I'll just make a couple of process notes, uh, cause she's certainly the equity on this. Uh, as you know, every year we, uh, we fund this partially through our CVBG funding, our community development block grants. Uh, that is in the last several years, uh, not been able to fully fund it. Uh, that's why you see the two in the motion here this evening. Um, and then also we went through, uh, as we do with all of our services, uh, an extensive process of, uh, bids, and, uh, this was our, our only bidder this year, unfortunately. Um, so we, uh, we're hopeful that they're able to, to do a good job for us, uh, but, you know, admittedly, we do like to see multiple bids in a, in a given year. Uh, your packet this evening includes a detailed report, uh, a memo from Parks Recreation Director as well as the contract, uh, for services itself. Thank you, sir.
Ms. McCarleton, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Um, as I explained in our memo, uh, this is a program that the city has been running for a number of years. Several years ago, we also did a grass cutting service in the summer for the seniors. Given that the funds that we received from the county for the community development block grant has subtly decreased to now and has remained steady for the last couple of years at thirty-five hundred. Most years, the city ends up having to pay out of, uh, the recreation fund, um, or the general fund, um, to cover if there's additional snow. Last year, uh, because there was not a heavy snowflaw, a snowfall, we actually have about just a little over four hundred dollars that we'll be able to use, um, going into this year as well. So we've got about thirty-nine hundred total from the county that we can, that we can use. The contract is written like this, cause the other four hundred is from the contract from last year, but we can use those funds. But anything additional, we will have to pay. As the city manager said, um, the last couple of years, the number of bids that we've been receiving for this particular service has also declined. Um, you know, four years ago, it was two bids and then it was one, one. When we first went out to bid for this in October, um, cause we tried to do it before it's going to snow, we received zero bids. Um, I then sort of circled back around, I contacted some of our neighbors, many of which do not provide this service and those that do pointed me in their, in a direction. So I could email the bid directly to a number of companies as well as putting it in the paper, like our community development block grant demands and also on Mitten. This was the one bid we got. Um, I am hopeful, it is a pretty, a relatively young company, um, and sometimes that can go really well, um, if a company wants to do a really good job and sometimes, you, you know, it, it's a little unknown. I checked the couple of references that they gave me and they were both solid, um, but there, there is a little bit unknown. Uh, I still really believe in this program, our department believes in this program, I think the city does, um, for the seniors that participate. It is a significant, um, savings for them and we look at it as a safety issue of them being able to get out of their homes and down their walkway and down their driveway. Um, so it's something that we still think is really important to offer and I'm hopeful that, um, A, this year won't be needed a lot if we don't have a heavy snowfall and B, um, that the service will be good. Uh, we are in communication with the companies when it does so over the three inches that's required in the contract. We're checking in with them, we're talking to them a lot, we talk with our seniors. So, um, this is something that both myself and our senior manager, Dan McMahon, uh, we're closely on.
Well, thank you, uh, Ms. McCarleton for giving us a little background in how we got to this point. Uh, questions for our director, um, on the motion that is in front of us? Councilmember Price.
Thank you so much, Director McCarleton, for your perseverance and making sure that we can offer this service even with a, a newer company. Um, I know it's a risk, but I'm grateful we got a bid at least. So thank you for, for working hard to make that happen. I was curious if you are still accepting applications and if so, what's the process? And if not, um, how many applicants were you able to accept this year?
We will accept probably a handful more is the answer. There's not a direct number. We, we try not to cut it off as an, at, at, at an exact number. We have thirty-five homes right now. The most that we've ever taken is forty. Um, that's sort of where we've seen with companies that we get the best service. Years ago, we took many more when it was a divided bid, but, um, over the last five years, we've really maxed out at that forty. If someone does still want to apply, they can call the Parks and Recreation Department or, um, email us at parks@berkleymish.net, um, and tell us their name and address. We'll send them an application and then they would just need to get that back with us pretty quickly. It's a one-page application.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, Director McCarleton, are there parameters, um, if, if somebody wants to apply for this? Are there certain requirements, things that need to be met, um, in order to participate in this program?
Yep, um, good question, thank you. Um, we do, the way the community development block grant runs is it's either income or age-based, um, or, um, severely, um, handicapped or disabled. So we do this age-based or, um, the disabled. We do then ask for income, cause that will depend on their co-pay. Um, we go off of the HUD limits, um, for income level, we'll either do a five, ten or a fifteen dollar co-pay. Um, as of right now, the homes that we have, the majority are five-dollar co-pays based on income, um, which means that that's what the resident pays, um, and then the city contributes the additional amount. Um, we also have some ten dollars and at this point, I believe we have one fifteen-dollar co-pay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor Pro Tem stole my question, so I appreciate the answer. Thank you, Teresa.
All right. Any additional questions for Ms. McCarleton this evening? Does not appear to be, thank you Teresa for your diligence in, um, finding somebody and really, you know, getting the word out here because as you mentioned, this is a very important service and something that we certainly like to offer and I, I think part of the reason we're running into so many, so many issues with, with bids, um, and it's not just in your department, some other areas as you know, it's just, there's an echo there. A lot of the, uh, potential red tape, I think, involved with, with these types of, of, of projects is, is scared some of the, uh, vendors off and it's, it's unfortunate, uh, because we do want to be able to continue providing you services. So again, I, I really appreciate your diligence and, and making this a reality, uh, for our residents. Seeing no additional questions or comments, uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M sixty-six twenty?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R forty-four twenty, manner of authorizing a resolution appointing new members to the Planning Commission and Master Plan Steering Committee.
Is there a motion to approve R forty-four twenty?
So moved.
Supported.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin, and I think maybe that was Councilmember Henon with support, possibly? Yes, it was, all right, perfect, good, the little yellow screen did not pop up quickly enough. Now, Mr. Baumgartner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two appointments coming before you this evening, both to fill vacancies. Uh, the first of which is the Planning Commission with the vacancy of Jeff Campbell, who is, uh, sadly moving out of the city and will absolutely be missed as both a resident and a planning commissioner. Uh, we had extensive process this time, we had fourteen fantastic applicants. Uh, you guys were left with the unenviable situation of, of appointing just a single one out of there. And, uh, through, uh, your collective feedback, we have, uh, put forth, uh, Shiloh Dolan, uh, to fill that position on the Planning Commission. And then also the, uh, second portion of the resolution is to appoint DDA Director Jennifer Finney to fill a vacancy on the Planet, Master Plan Steering Committee, uh, which is an ad hoc position, which, uh, I'm sorry, ad hoc committee, uh, so this appointment should run through the existence of the committee. Uh, both of them coming for you this evening, greatly qualified and, uh, certainly ready to serve. Uh, and I think there are resumes and background information were provided with, to you, uh, previously and throughout the, uh, appointment and vetting process. You've got a, a memo in your packet from Community Development Director, Aaron Schluto, uh, who gives a little bit of background, uh, and, and talks a little bit about the, uh, some of the great things that are gonna happen on the Planning Commission as well as, uh, uh, some of the background on the vacancy itself. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Baumgartner, and, and I wanted to, before we, we move on, um, just take a second, uh, what you mentioned at the very beginning, that we had fourteen or so, uh, applications. Uh, we are getting tremendous support from our residents, uh, for boards and commissions, and I'm truly, truly appreciative of that. The unfortunate thing is when you have fourteen for one, you have one, and I certainly hope that that does not, um, disappoint anyone or dissuade them from, uh, applying in the future to, to, uh, other boards and commissions. But, but there was a time when we didn't have a lot of folks and, and it was kind of maybe one or two people would apply and that's all we could appoint. So, um, it's great and it's also great that we have such a qualified base in our community of folks who have expertise in the particular areas that we're looking to appoint. And it's not just all the same expertise, we've got a variety of different, um, experiences that, that come into play and will have a significant impact on the boards and, and commissions, uh, that we are looking at today and of course with, with Shiloh and, uh, and Jennifer. Comments, uh, from council or questions from council? Councilmember Gavin?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just more of a thanks to a couple of different folks here. I certainly wanna thank Shiloh. Um, you know, I think our background in civil engineering is gonna be an invaluable perspective, uh, for the city. Uh, so, you know, thank you for the willingness to serve and, and also giving so generously of your time and, and thank you to everyone, as was mentioned, uh, who submitted an application to serve. And, uh, definitely wanna thank Jennifer as well to, uh, jumping on the Master Plan Steering Committee. I think you're gonna have an invaluable voice that really is gonna bring a great perspective to, uh, what's already been really, really, um, really great dialogue, frankly, uh, that we've had on that, on that ad hoc committee. And then of course, thank you to Aaron and, uh, Chair Kristen Kapalansky for all your efforts in this, so thanks very much.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions or comments? Does not appear that we do have any. Both Shiloh and Jennifer are with us, uh, this evening, so I'm sure you guys are, are both really eagerly awaiting this vote, uh, to, to see what happens. Uh, but I do appreciate you both being with us, uh, this evening as well. Since you are both here and we're in the virtual room, is there anything either of you would, uh, like to say before we call for a vote on this?
Um, I'll, I'll just say a few words. I, you know, I'm, will be the DDA representative on this committee, so I am happy that the DDA is able to serve on this committee and that I will be able to represent the DDA's thoughts, um, for the Master Plan Steering Committee and the Master Plan of the City moving forward. I think, um, you know, like Ross said, that I will be able to, you know, share some insight. Um, and I've actually been able to attend two of the committee meetings already, so it's already been a great experience. Um, so I'm looking forward to officially serving, you know, on that committee and, um, to see the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shiloh, I apologize, I did not mean to put you on the spot, you may have turned on your camera or anything. You wanted to, that's cool, but if you don't have, if you, it's completely okay as well. Normally we wouldn't do this, but you're welcome.
I just wanna thank everybody. I, I appreciate being considered and it's, it'll be an honor to serve the community.
Well, thank you, Shiloh, and, and thank you, Jennifer. And without any further ado, let's see if you actually get to serve on those committees. Well, thank you, Shiloh, and thank you, Jennifer. And without any further ado, let's see if you actually get to serve on those committees. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you both again for being with us and for volunteering additional time to our community. Ms. Mitchell, let's move on to item number four, please.
Motion number M sixty-seven twenty, motion to consider an interlocal agreement with Oakland County to approve the designated assessor for the period January first, twenty-twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and authorize the city manager to sign on the city's behalf.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-seven twenty?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This interlocal agreement is separate from our existing one, naming Oakland County equalization as the, serving generally as the role of the city's assessor. This particular local government agreement stems from recent changes in state statutes, specifically, as noted in the packet, PA six-sixty, in which the city would additionally, and separate from our existing agreement, name Dave Heber, who is the head of the Equalization Division, as our designated assessor. And again, as noted in the, the packet information, there are some, a little bit of ambiguities in this law. We, we do think it applies to Berkeley. We think it applies to Oakland County. And so the county supplied a, a template agreement that was reviewed by the city attorney's office. None of us had any issues, any potential concerns with moving forward on this and, and brings us into full compliance with PA six-sixty. So we are recommending that the council take the action of designating Dave Heber, Dave Heber as the city's designated assessor for the terms indicated in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Are there questions for the city manager on M sixty-seven twenty? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick clarification. Matt, is this the item that's causing so much concern in a lot of the smaller communities and a lot of the townships about having a certified assessor? Or is there something different?
I believe that concern stems from the same state statute. Yes, sir.
Okay. And I know there's been a lot of confusion, a lot of comments in, in smaller towns. That's what I was wondering about. So yeah, then I'm, I'm familiar with what this is. Thank you.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to say real quickly that I've had the, the good fortune of working with Dave Heber quite frequently in, in my day job. And, and he's the consummate professional and, and really well-respected around the state for the work he does in terms of assessing and with the equalization department. So I think the city, outside of the, the normal contract that we already have with Oakland County equalization, is well-served with Dave in this role.
Thank you for your feedback there. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, there's not a whole lot for us to really discuss here, so I appreciate that. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M sixty-seven twenty?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to our second public comments portion of the evening. Again, this is for items that were not covered on tonight's agenda. The same rules apply as before, meaning you have three minutes to speak. And if your concern does need to be addressed by a department of the city or a member of city staff, please make sure to email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymish.net or call the clerk's office at two-four-eight-six-five-eight-three-three-one-zero. If you would like to comment, please raise your hand or dial in at three-one-two-six-two-six-six-seven-nine-nine. You will be recognized either by name or number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence.
I'm not seeing anyone at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll give everybody another second, just in case somebody's frantically trying to dial in.
Oh, I do see a hand raise. Scott in Autumn, you are welcome to speak. I have the timer set for now.
Hi. My name is Scott Sei, and I live in Berkeley. And I just wanted to comment on the fact that some people around here have already gotten the warning signs from the city ordinance office about removing their political signs. And I've, I've heard that this has been, was planned on being addressed at a previous meeting, but got dropped from any actual item. You know, the laws have changed recently after a Supreme Court ruling. And according to the Michigan Municipal League, basically, the ruling should be if the, you need to read the message on the sign to determine if it's regulated, then the regulation is content-based. Our current law says that, Berkeley regulations say that any political sign must be taken down ten days after the election. However, it appears that that would be deemed unconstitutional after the new ruling. So if anyone has any idea when that would be stricken from the, the law, the Berkeley regulations, or, you know. That's it. I see my time.
All right. Well, thank you, Scott. I, I appreciate that.
I'm not seeing anyone else at this time.
We'll give it just another second as we, see, sometimes it takes people seconds to either get unmuted or to raise their hand. Okay, not seeing anybody else. We will close our second public comments. And we will now move on to communications. And I believe Councilmember Baker is first up for communications this evening.
Well, thank you very much, Your Honor, and I'll try to keep this brief here again tonight. A quick update about the, the various committees that I have the, the pleasure of liaising with. I'm not sure what the verb is for that, but there you go. Technology Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet next week's Wednesday, December sixteenth, starting at six-thirty. And I just want to add that a lot of our conversations around here these days are about not catching the COVID virus. And I just want to remind you that, hey, don't let your computers catch viruses either. That certainly is not an even comparison, but I'm trying to, just roll with me here. So don't click on links from untrusted sources. Make sure that you create strong passwords. For instance, if there's a, a sentence that is meaningful to you, consider taking the first letter of each word or the last letter of each word from that sentence to make a, a strong password. And make sure to secure your home router and Wi-Fi. It's important, as always, to maintain cyber vigilance in what you do. And as we approach the, the continuation of the holiday shopping season here, please, you know, take care of yourselves, both physically, of course, and then also cyberly. I made up two words. The Downtown Development Authority has some awesome things coming up. They meet this week's Wednesday, December ninth, at eight-thirty. And just a couple of highlights I'd like to share is that our, the Merry Month events continue. It's hard to believe, but it's very important that we indeed stay merry as we head through the, the holiday season here from November twenty-eighth through February first. And a number of great events are happening, including the Holiday Window Display from November twenty-eighth through January eighteenth. Walk the streets to see your, all the variety of delightful winter, winter Wonderland-themed window displays. And, and you can vote for your favorites. There's a link available through the DDA website to vote for your favorite window display. Donations are being collected for Gleaners Community Food Bank from November twenty-eighth through the thirty-first at Berkeley Common, Some Girls Boutique, Yellow Door, and Vitrine Gallery, which is awesome. And there are a variety of Berkeley bucks available. We're giving out actually seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars' worth of downtown Berkeley bucks to select shoppers. And there's ways that you can go about gaining an opportunity to earn some of those bucks through our, our virtual Main Street powered through this service called ShopLoyal. And again, if you have any receipts for the downtown businesses, send them to marketing@downtownberkeley.com to be entered to win that, that prize. There is a winter, winter-themed scavenger hunt throughout the city. It's the fun, socially distant event that can get you out of a house and yet safely interacting with, with the city without getting yourselves into too much trouble from December first through February first. And there's a link to that again through the DDA site. And the first three individuals to complete the scavenger hunt successfully will receive fifty dollars, fifty bucks in downtown Berkeley bucks. There's some other great things going on, in particular, December tenth and December eleventh, so coming up real soon. Select businesses will be open until eight PM or later, and they're all offering great promotions. I'll just list the, some of the businesses here. Berkeley Common, again, Some Girls Boutique, The Artsy Umbrella, Annabelle's, Vitrine Gallery, The Fresh Collection Kitchen and Market, Omen's Health and Beauty. So check those guys out. And on December tenth and eleventh, they'll be open late just for you, which is cool. There'll be a holiday concert coming up on Saturday, December twelfth, a virtual online concert featuring Lilian Dean. Councilmember Dean, I'm not sure if there's any relation there, if it's just a friendly coincidence. But you can check out her musical talents coming up from three o'clock until four o'clock on December twelfth. And Storytime with Santa, Santa having successfully completed that, that tour of the city. And again, thanks to everybody for helping coordinate that. I know a lot of the folks behind the scenes did some terrific work to make that Santa tour possible. Well, he's back for more, and he'll be telling some stories on December nineteenth, so Saturday from now, from noon to one. And there's a link that you can click on to access that as well. And finally, the Historical Committee is working on more organization and scanning of the various materials that are in the archives because although the museum is, of course, closed because of all the stuff that's happening right now, that, that doesn't mean that our work is finished because Berkeley has a whole lot of history yet to share. And if you have anything that you'd like to donate to contribute to that history, please feel free to, to reach out to the museum through the city's website or contact City Hall. And, and we'd be happy to coordinate a safe and easy way to, to drop off and, and collect any historical materials, photos, newspapers, books, that kind of fun stuff. And the new coffee mug is still available. I knew a new, I know that a new shipment was just delivered to Tudy and Tallulah's at Twelve and Coolidge and among many other places where you can get that, that fine addition to your coffee mug collection. And, and finally, it was A.A. Milne who once said, "A little consideration, a little thought for others makes all the difference." And my thoughts there again are around both the joy that the, the virtual Santa parade brought to our entire city. I'm sure others, my colleagues, will, will offer their thoughts and appreciation for that as well. But with my DDA hat on, I also want to ask that to continue to please do your best to support our local shops and restaurants. And, and please wear a mask. Remember that the mask is more about protecting others from you than it is about protecting you from others. If we all do our part and show that little bit of consideration and that thought for others, it'll go a long way to helping at least do what we can to, to try to curb this, the, where the COVID thing is at these days. It's just crazy. Yeah, again, please be safe and respectful and, and be kind to one another. Because after all, we are the city that cares. And so let's, let's demonstrate that we care for all of our residents and our families. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. We now move over to Councilmember Price.
Thank you. My neighbors and kids asked me to thank Santa for making a special visit to Berkeley on Saturday. And of course, I want to thank all of the city's staff and volunteers who made his visit possible. It brought great joy through my neighborhood and the rest of the city. Thank you. On a related note, I also want to thank all the residents who have added festive glow to our streets by displaying holiday lights on their homes this year. The Beautification Advisory Committee is currently canvassing in preparation for their Holiday Spirit Awards. So if you see someone slowly driving by your house and taking photos, don't be too suspicious. It's probably a member of the Beautification Advisory Committee, especially if your house is lit up with lights. The library continues to offer virtual programs and digital resources as well as curbside and porch deliveries of materials. I am personally looking forward to joining the Afternoon Book Club tomorrow. We get to discuss The Silent Patient, which is one of the best books I've read all year. So looking forward to that program. The creative resourcefulness of our city's staff, volunteers, and residents continues to deliver both joy and essential resources as we enter yet another challenging period of the pandemic. The promise of effective vaccines brings great hope as we hunker down, stay safe, and each do our part to reduce the spread of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things, as you know, I'm the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. And so I also want to encourage everybody to shop local and dine local. As you probably all know, MDHHS extended the epidemic order twelve days today so that we're now under the same conditions through December twentieth. So this is even going to throw a bigger impact on our local businesses and our local restaurants. So we need to make sure that we're out there getting takeout and, and purchasing our gifts that we can through our local businesses. And also, that way you can avoid, avoid shipping delays. In another note, winter is coming on, as we know, so be prepared for that. Let's make sure that we stay off the roads during and after a winter storm so that our snowplows can get out there. Have carbon monoxide alarms in place, especially if you're using any alternative heating devices. Use safe heating devices for additional heat. And if you get into a real cold step, be sure to check on your neighbors, especially the senior citizens, to make sure that they're, they're doing okay and they don't need any assistance. And with Christmas coming on and the lights going up to make the houses look beautiful, please be careful of how they're wired up to make sure that we don't have an electrical problem with that. So just think safety during this winter season, and we'll all get through this and have a great New Year's. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Mayor Protem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Parks and Recreation Department continues to offer ideas for at-home recreation. And if you need some inspiration or want to know what those ideas are, you can check out their Facebook page and see what they're suggesting, what they're suggesting. They do have two activities coming up this month. One is a holiday park treasure hunt, and the other is a coloring contest. And the winners in each age group of the coloring contest will have their masterpiece as the Parks and Recreation Facebook cover page for, for a while. They'll be rotating those through. Information on both of these activities may be found on the Parks and Recreation Facebook page. Work continues on the new park development at Oxford Merchants. It will be slowing down pretty soon because of the winter weather. But a lot has been done, and we look forward to seeing that start up again in the spring. And, excuse me, I also want to mention that there is a public hearing for the five-year recreation master plan that will be coming before council at our next meeting. And you may access the recreation master plan on the city's website. As has been mentioned, this past Saturday, we were treated to our first ever, I believe, drive-by Santa Parade Celebration. And what struck me the most was the number of adults lined up on the street to catch a glimpse of Santa, myself included. Uh, we were standing outside the niche shop, um, watching for him to come by and what really, I believe it, what struck me too was that I think we just really needed something like this right now. Everybody enjoyed it, adults and children alike. And so, um, it was truly a collaborative community effort. And I want to recognize the Berkeley Holiday Lights Parade Committee, our Department of Public Safety, our Department of Public Works, Community Engagement Officer Tori Mathis, and Chief Information Officer Stan Lisca. And finally, Mayor Turbrack, who was truly committed to making something work. And so when all these groups of people and residents come together to make something happen, excuse me, it just warms my heart. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, Councilmember Henan?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, the ZDA and the Tree Board have not met since our last meeting and they won't be meeting again until January, so nothing to report for them. Uh, I did want to echo the thanks for everyone that did the great work on the, uh, Santa Parade around the city. I heard from so many people how much they enjoyed it and for my wife and I, we were looking forward to it all day. It gave us an excuse to get out of the house and, and ran into our neighbors also waiting and, you know, a chance to talk to them when often when it gets cold like this, you don't have a, that chance. And we even took a walk around the neighborhood afterwards and there were just lots of people out. Um, and so I just think it was a really great event. Then finally, please, everyone, stay home if you can, wear a mask if you can't, and stay safe.
Thank you, Councilmember Henan. Uh, Councilmember Gavin?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates. Uh, Planning Commission met, uh, last month. Uh, continued discussions on side yard setbacks and exterior appliances. Uh, also discussed facade change on Coolidge and some site improvements for Vibe on Coolidge as well. So uh, Planning also had a work session, uh, to discuss, uh, some draft language of the early part of the master plan, uh, and hoping to provide some feedback on that, uh, that front. They'll next meet on Tuesday, uh, the 15th at 7:00 PM. Uh, Environmental Advisory Committee, uh, met last month and also continued discussions on uh, their implementation of the energy plan, green infrastructure, and also continued talks on the possibility of a community garden. Uh, Environmental Advisory Committee will meet next month, uh, so no meeting in December. Uh, it'll be next month, January 21st at 6:30. And, and Master Plan Steering Committee discussed, uh, much of what I covered uh, also in providing, uh, for the Planning Commission, uh, also in providing feedback on some early version of the portion of the master plan as well. So the next meeting will be next Monday, the 17th at 7:00 PM. And, uh, just echoing my colleagues, all of them, uh, you know, I thought that Santa driving up and down the streets of Berkeley was such a pick-me-up. Uh, and as, uh, Mayor Protem Dean said, uh, not just for children, but certainly for adults as well. So a big thank you uh, for such a successful and frankly uplifting event when I think everyone could really use that. So uh, thank you all and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Gavin. Uh, Mr. Baumgart?
Uh, Lieutenant Mayor, uh, just want to note, uh, that there's, uh, some commentary earlier about the city's sign ordinance. Uh, what Mr. Sehi bring, uh, brought up is correct. The city has halted, uh, its enforcement, uh, of that particular section of the sign ordinance. Uh, as we've been discussing, uh, throughout this year, uh, we do anticipate to bring a, a full revision of the city's entire sign ordinance uh, uh, back to council for, for a complete overhaul. We know there's several sections of it uh, that have, um, you know, this overtime, case law, and, and best practices evolve. And we just want to make sure that, uh, the text of our ordinance does the same. Uh, and that's, uh, will be a work in progress in the, over the coming year or so. Um, also want to add that, uh, for those that are, are not reading the newsletter, uh, and, uh, I think you're really missing out. There's some, there's great updates from each department. There's, uh, there's a mayor's, uh, there's a manager's message in there. Uh, but as soon as you get past that dribble, there's actually really good information from the various departments. Uh, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that goes into that month to month, uh, and it can be a great guide for really how to enjoy Berkeley, especially in the winter months when, uh, people uh, don't, may not think there's a whole lot going on. Your, your library is still putting forth great, uh, events. Parks and Recreation, uh, is likewise doing some fun winter events. Uh, there's a ton going on in Berkeley and and that's a great little, uh, treasure map as far as how to find it all. Uh, last but not least, uh, I'd like, and I reflect, uh, whatever else is said. Fantastic job to, um, to Public Works, to Public Safety, uh, to Stan, to Tori, to, to everybody that helps uh, bring Santa up and down every street in the city. I, as you know, I have five-year-old twins and then we actually had to put them on our shoulders because we just couldn't stop their excitement. They were running up and down the sidewalk just waiting for, uh, Santa to get here. So, um, truly and from their perspective, uh, Public Safety being flanked by Public Safety on either side, they saw nothing but grinning, smiling faces on every street. And so I, I, I think they were just as happy to, to bring cheer as Santa himself was. So uh, it was a great weekend. It was a great weekend in Berkeley for sure. It was a fun time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Tori Christ, anything, uh, you would like to touch on this evening?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and Council. Uh, just one, uh, quick legislative update. As council knows, Public Act 228 allowed, uh, for electronic and remote meetings through the end of this year, uh, for any reason. Um, however, come, uh, January 1st, the only basis for electronic meetings will be for uh, military duty, a, uh, medical condition, or a declared state or local emergency. There is, uh, House Bill 6207 has come out of committee, uh, and that would extend the any circumstance provision, uh, for a public body to have an electronic meeting uh, through March 30th of 2021. It's not been voted on yet, uh, but it has come out of, uh, a committee. It's likely that it will be considered, uh, within the next week or two. We will certainly keep, uh, the city advised of its progress. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Christ. Uh, Ms. Mitchell, I know you're not necessarily on the list, but you were not with us in November. Any, uh, any election highlights? You missed all the great things we said about you, uh, but, uh, anything, uh, any, any final closure on the election?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, this is my first meeting back since the election, so I would like the opportunity um, to thank Deputy Clerk Gina Harold and our election specialist, Ashley Mers. Um, you know, it was, they did a tremendous job, um, very tenacious. You know, it was a long season for us and I'm very appreciative of their help. Um, also wanted to thank quickly Sue Redden from Finance, who donated her time and counted and balanced, um, over 7,500 ballots. So just very, very appreciative of her help. And really everyone's helped for the, everyone pitched in, the Treasury Department, the City Manager's Office, of course DPW. I think each election, the, the gear to set up and tear down is heavier and much more plentiful, um, as we stack PPE in every precinct, um, with each election. Um, Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Safety. Everybody really pitched in. It was a true Berkeley effort. And then of course, we wouldn't have had it without our workers. Just so appreciative for all the workers who stepped up, um, during a global pandemic to work the election. Many of our, our workers were Berkeley residents. Um, we couldn't do, do it without them and of course the residents, um, with an over 81% turnout. That is just remarkable. Um, and over 7,500 absentee ballots and all the people who came to the precincts. So appreciative to the residents for taking part and participating and in such a respectful manner. It made me very, very proud to represent the city of Berkeley and serve our residents. So thank you very much and thanks for the opportunity.
Certainly, and, and thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Again, you, you may not have heard everything. Hopefully you saw it, but yes, we are also very appreciative of your efforts in coordinating and leading an election which, which had, you know, 81% turnout. So, so thank you for that. Now I have just a few things this evening. First off, uh, you've heard us talk about the Michigan Municipal League many times. Uh, they're very important, uh, advocate for us and, and the city of Berkeley is very involved in the Michigan Municipal League. Mayor Protem Dean was asked by the MML, uh, to participate in the Elected Officials Academy as a moderator for a breakout session and a panelist for training that took place via Zoom on Monday, November 23rd. She was on a panel with Marlon Brown, the Mayor Protem of Mason, Cardi DeMonico Jr., uh, Councilmember of East Point, Ian Parata, the Mayor Protem of Hamtramck, and William Wild, uh, the Mayor of Westland. Uh, she did a tremendous job representing our community as, as most of our, all of our elected officials do, uh, whenever they are called on by the MML to participate. And thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, for your service and helping to prepare those newly elected officials. And as has been mentioned, um, by my colleagues, uh, Saturday evening was, was certainly not the way that we typically would, would usher in the holiday season in Berkeley. Um, as, as I commented and as my colleagues did as well, when we had to cancel the parade this year, which is absolutely one of my favorite days, um, it was incredibly, it was an incredibly difficult decision. And in some instances, that might have been it, uh, just chalked up to, uh, another, uh, event that COVID prevented. But that wasn't the case here in Berkeley. Um, Cindy Coon and, and the committee were, were committed to finding a way to still bring joy to our residents at a time when it is incredibly needed. And it started with an idea that sounded great, um, but we knew would be incredibly difficult to pull off given the extenuating circumstances. Uh, there were a number of Zoom meetings and, and coordination back and forth. It would require DPW to be able to get Santa's sleigh into something that would allow it to comfortably fit up and down our streets under time constraints that, you know, made it nearly impossible and, and would rely on public safety guiding Santa safely throughout the streets of Berkeley and getting him to the gazebo for the virtual tree lighting ceremony. And all of that would only be possible if Santa could find the time during his extremely busy season, December, uh, to make it work while still keeping him on track for his Christmas Eve delivery. And despite all of those challenges, it happened and it was an incredibly magical afternoon and evening in the city of Berkeley. I can't thank Cindy Coon, Denise Callis, Sean Young, Corey Miller, Jordan Kobernick, Scott Smith, Chief Kane, Rick Chalmers, Tori Mathis, Stan Lisca, the entire DPU, uh, DPW Department and Department of Public Safety for the joy that they helped bring to, to our community on Saturday. It was, it was emotional for folks that were watching it. It was emotional for people who were able to be a part of it. Um, and it certainly felt like a, a true Christmas miracle and, and not something that I or our residents will forget. And the feedback has been incredibly positive. And as was mentioned, it was not just for the kids. Um, I can tell you without a doubt, my father was yelling as loudly as any, as any of my children to make sure that Santa remembered where he lived when he came down our street. In fact, he made sure that he was in front of his house so Santa knew that was his house, not, not my house, anybody else's house. And it, it was just, it was, it was a tremendous night and it wouldn't have happened if all of those folks in, in departments that I mentioned didn't come together to make something happen, going far, far above the normal call of duty. And honestly, I just don't know how many other communities in the country could have pulled something like that off in the timeframe that they did and have it go as well as it did. And I'm, I'm just incredibly proud of our community and everybody that was able to, to make that happen. As everybody else mentioned, I know this is the, the, the shopping season and we need to certainly be smart and stay safe. If we can frequent our businesses, please do so, but do so in a safe manner, as has been mentioned. Please wear masks. Don't forget, uh, the wonderful restaurants that are around, uh, for takeout to take a little pressure off of having to, to prepare all the meals. Try to remember to support our businesses just as much as possible throughout this holiday season. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Mayor Protem Dean. I'm going to give it to Councilmember Baker, even though I'm not sure his, his microphone was officially turned on. I saw him mouthing it a couple of times. So we're going to give it to Councilmember Baker. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Uh, the December 7th, which also happens to be my brother's birthday. Happy birthday, Bobby. Uh, 2020 meeting of the 38th Council is adjourned.